Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, November 20th. Also known as the Monday before Thanksgiving. Six o'clock PM, Select Board Conference Room. This meeting is being recorded. If anyone else is recording the meeting, you're more than welcome to do it. Just let Jason know. And why don't we have Nate Dean lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, the which is honest, alive, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Six o'clock PM, public comments. If anybody has anything they want to bring to the attention of the Select Board that's not on our agenda tonight. Now is your opportunity. We'll deal with the multitudes in the room first. Two people, I got a fifty fifty shot. Young lady.
In the Hotel in forty five Pine Road. I first want to thank the Select Board for allowing the Economic Development Commission to put together a Facebook page. Which we did yesterday and we are promoting our first event. It's going to be this coming Saturday, November twenty fifth. It's our shop local dine local promotion. And I actually spoke to Cliff Clark, who I see is online today and gave him some really good information for an article that's going to hit the paper. So you'll be seeing our bags at eleven businesses and we have right now fourteen restaurants that are participating. So, thank you.
Awesome. Anyone else? No one over there? Okay, on Zoom. Okay. Nope, don't sell past the close, bud. We're going to acknowledge payables warrant number two four one two B dated eleven fourteen and the amount of one million twenty eight thousand four hundred and thirty three dollars and sixty one cents. I have not had a chance to review the minutes. Has anyone reviewed the minutes?
I did.
Oh, we did.
Okay, then I would entertain them. Motion for the minutes of November thirteenth.
Making motion to accept the open session minutes from eleven thirteen.
Second most.
Okay. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Dan Gell, aye.
Okay. Second reading on policy increasing capital expenditures, classification threshold amount from one thousand to five thousand dollars per outside order to recommendation. Any feedback, Mr. Steinhardt, on that first reading?
Well, we did make sure that we had shared it with the accounting department and they went over it also with the Finance Committee who met last week. And they would prefer that we just move it up to, I believe, an eighteen hundred dollar number. And I was told by the Chairman of the Finance Committee that he would be reaching out to you to have to discuss that with you, but if you haven't heard from him, then that means that didn't happen.
Apparently not.
Okay. So what we can do is just carry this forward until we hear back from that other group.
Any objection? To carry it to next week?
Well, I know myself and Ms. Gail were at that meeting. We did listen to what they had to say. I don't have a problem carrying it forward, but yeah, so.
Was that consistent with what?
That was consistent with what they said.
Hundred was the number?
Yeah.
I'm not sure where the numbers lie from.
That's the number that came up with.
It's not necessarily what I agree. So we can carry it and discuss it.
Yeah, because you can always just make a different number decision.
I listened to most of that recording and I think I might have missed that section because it's also seems like an odd number that probably seems like there'd be an explanation between eighteen hundred dollars.
They thought inflation would account for that.
Well, that just gets you from a thousand up to eight.
And I would get it if you stayed well split in half at twenty five hundred or something like that.
This week and then, and then hear from them next week, or do we want to discuss it next week? Because we're discussing it.
Well, we can, we can discuss it all. I mean, I, I didn't have an issue with it at five thousand dollars. So I'd like to, you know, given. When was the last time this was changed?
Decades. It's been that way ever since even I got here.
The Finance Chair.
And that was American dollars right then, right? It wasn't silver certificates, right?
So Bitcoins or Ringo's currencies or just checking.
Bullion. The Finance Chair's concern was that he's concerned that it might be like giving folks a blank check. I don't think, I think we have responsible folks in our. I've never, since I've been here, I haven't seen anybody too irresponsible with their funds.
I agree.
But, and I probably am thinking along the same lines as Ms. Gail. I know where my number is. If there's that much of a concern, but I, I mean, five thousand dollars can't even get you a good lawnmower nowadays if you're.
Not a really good one, no.
Not a parking wreck or.
No.
That's.
But it's, and it still has a, I mean,
It has to be approved.
Because I, because I, I agree with you in, in that regard. So I, and eighteen hundred dollars just seems like an odd number in the grand scheme of things. Make it
Two, twenty five hundred.
Twenty five hundred, three, yeah, I get it.
If it went from one to five, it's a four thousand increase. I would have said if anybody was uncomfortable with it, split that increase and make it three thousand.
Okay.
And that's.
We'll pick this up next week and resolve it because I think we're pretty close and we'll see where we're at.
Okay.
Okay, approved sewer abatement for one four four Berkshire Avenue. Oh, I did, I did see this, this one. Yes, gentleman had a leak.
Yeah.
So gallons in gallons out. So they were proposing that they rebate seven, six hundred gallons for about eighty one dollars all in.
Yeah, and as a general rule, once the board sees that the, the issue's water based related, they usually go along with the water condition.
Yeah.
In your role as the sewer commissioner.
Correct. So I need a motion to approve the sewer. And then after the meeting, we can all sign the old books.
I will make a motion to approve the sewer abatement for one forty four Berkshire Avenue.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Dan Gell, aye.
And then we have elderly sewer rate applications for eighteen Crescent, twenty seven Granville, two Oak, seventeen Pine Wood and nineteen Shore. If there's no objection to handling those all in an omnibus motion. I had read, I've read all these, but so if anyone has an objection or want to handle them individually, or would you like to just do that and handle their bus?
We can do it in an omnibus with Ms. Gail's over there.
I am.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept all the elderly rate applications as one omnibus package.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Dan Gell, aye.
And for those following at home, this is related to, I think, some of the, the new sewer rates we did provide now in elderly category here. So we're going to start to see a bunch of these coming through as we expected. So bear with us. New business. Review recommendation for bids on Southwick Police Department Station cupola repairs act on results from facilities management award to GCS construction for twenty eight thousand dollars. So we went, we went back out to bid, Carl?
Yes, you did. Once you voted to reject them, the bids were reworked. There was outreach done for people to come and view the location. And they came back within where we were because we, once you had already signed off on the other contractor, we have them under contract for the roofer. This is the other amount. So this would still give us, awarding this would still give you about four thousand left. The, the clerk of the works said, so that's going to be covering his costs and any contingency issues. So this is much better than some of the earlier numbers. And I think even this one is past.
Still pretty far.
Yeah, this one, right? The other one was fifty six thousand, the next closest one. And then one after that was seventy four, which based on the earlier bids was on the low end. So this is something that the Facilities Management Group and the Clerk of the Works are recommending. And as you can see, you do have all the forums, you have the minutes, you've got everything you need to make a decision.
And as a bonus, it's a local business.
Uh, yes. Yeah.
Well, if you look at what they did to their, to their current place where they are, oh, they spiffed that place up. I'd entertain a motion to award this to GCS Construction.
And they have to look at it every time they drive through, right?
No doubt. And everyone has to look by their offices every time they drive right through the center of town. So anyone who want to make a motion to award this to GCS for the amount of twenty eight thousand dollars and additional PVC unit price at two hundred and seventy five dollars a square foot, which was also the low bid.
Gladly make the motion for GCS Construction to do the cupola project on police station.
Including the additional PVC units. And I'll second that.
Doug Mogul, aye. Right on the, on this page here.
On the front.
This one.
Second following.
Oh. And blind.
We're good.
We're good. Did we vote it? Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Dan Gell, aye.
So what we'll do is we'll prepare the standard contracts. So that will be on your counter to sign, but you've already voted to authorize yourself to.
Yeah. And who signs it? All three of us?
Yes.
So then we've already done it. We're good.
Right.
Okay. Approve and announce the twenty twenty three transfer station holiday hours. Hear ye, hear ye. Saturday, they're going to be open Saturday, December twenty third, half day, eight to twelve. Sunday, they're normally closed anyway. Monday, they're normally closed anyway. Tuesday will be normal, Tuesday, the twenty sixth of December, normal hours, eleven thirty to seven twenty. Wednesday, eight to four twenty, which is normal. Friday, December twenty ninth, eight to four twenties, normal hours. Saturday, the day before New Year's Eve Day, open eight to twelve, half day. Closed on the thirty first and the first, which they don't move anyway. And Tuesday, back to normal hours, eleven thirty to seven twenty. I guess we also need to vote to approve this request, but.
Yeah, because you'll, you know, there may be issues that relate to overtime to pay those costs to.
Well, yeah, that's the twenty sixth and the second. It's a health issue.
Exactly. Public sanitation comes first.
Need a motion to approve.
I will make the motion to approve the holiday hours for the transfer station.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Dan Gell, aye.
Okay. Other new business, Carl?
Okay.
Natey?
Oh, so good. Done.
I had my meeting with a couple of folks and I just want to give you my notes and make sure anything. I sent an email to Carl. A couple of folks are, would like a more of a layman's breakdown of how the mill rate is set. Then Mr. Steinhardt has given me that. So I'm going to pass that along, let folks know. I understand it enough to understand it. I don't understand how to explain it. So.
It's a, it's a document that the assessors have used over the years, but they make as an insert with the tax rate when it's set, which hadn't come out yet because the tax rate was just set on Friday.
Last week, I was going to say, I remember getting it, yeah.
So we're, you know, so that's going to be going up, you know, Michelle's and Laura, the, the team is putting together what they need to do and Jess, because Jess is on board now as of last week.
Yep.
So the track transition is happening. Now, you know, we need to deal with the other, the other positions. You and I have to go deal with that one. But so that's good, coming along. So the rates will be coming up and, and you know, Jason's going to talk to you what it looks like.
Let's see, some of the other folk, uh, police vehicles, I see Lieutenant Banish is on there. People are just curious and we get this at my place of employment. They see a lot of vehicles sitting around and they're curious, do we really need them all? Yes. We do. Lieutenant Banish, you hear me?
I know you have functionality and one of them's a traffic control vehicle, which is not a police plate. He's got detective and admin cars.
Yes, what can I do for you?
We're just, uh, at my meet office hours this week, a couple of folks asked about police vehicles and the, you know, the amount of vehicles. As I stated at my place of employment, we get the question, they're like, there's so many vehicles, do we need them all? You know, can we save some money? And as, as you and I both know, sometimes you don't have any vehicles sitting in the parking lot. So any feedback?
That would be correct. I mean, for a number of years, we pretty much operated bare bones. When we retired some of these last cruisers, we did opt to hold on to them, obviously with permission of the Select Board. A couple of those cruisers they use primarily for outside details, we've had a, a number of contractors as of the last couple of years who've requested cruisers. So that was the main reason we had hung on to those. We've also added, you know, three additional officers to our, to our department. So just to keep up with everything, you know, those cars unfortunately are needed.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Rhett.
No problem. And when, when a cruiser is, Lieutenant, when a cruiser is requested as part of a detail, they pay extra for the detail, correct?
That would be correct. That's paid through the, whoever the requister is, unless it's the, the town of Sal, we do not charge town of Sal to use the cruiser.
Right. We're, we're making, we have an add-on for the officer and then we have an add-on for the vehicle.
Correct.
And all that goes to it into our funds because we have to ensure these things, you know, things cost money, people cost money, equipment costs money. So we just need to make sure we're cost recovering.
Let's see, other things that came up, there was some interest in wondering if the Depot Street sidewalks are ever going to be finished and extended to College Highway. In the same vein, some folks were asking about the house that's right on the corner there. I, I was informed abandoned, empty, sold.
Which corner?
Malone's. So that was sold as part of the condo development that's.
I, one of the things that was floated was approaching the developer, if it ever is developed and looking into possibly coming up some parking for the bike trail. I think it's a good idea to look into that.
We need it.
You, we have the recreational trails program grant. When I was the former OIC of the ATV unit and my place of employment, we put in for some grants, we were, prior to the change in the ATV laws for age for youth, we were going to open up an ATV training park. But that recreational trails program grant money could possibly be used for that. Actually, I know it can be used for that because that's how the rail trails are funded.
It's my understanding that that intersection is being studied for redesign right now.
Well, yeah, I mean, from there all the way to Wally Park is going to be sidewalks across the street. That's other things that you've already approved in motion by the Public Works Department. But obviously.
I think the whole intersection Randy mentioned was being redesigned.
Depot Street all the way from College Highway down to the four-way was, was understudy. It's on the plan. It's not on the tip, but it was a planned project.
Time bond.
So everybody's been kind of slow walking it because he didn't want to put sidewalks in. They immediately dig them back up when they widen that road or fix it.
No, but we do need more parking for rail trail in many different places.
I'd have to go back to the videotapes of the discussions with the planning board from that. That was a topic of discussion during their special permit process for that. I don't know if it's in there or not.
I can, I can ask you that.
I'd have to go back and look, but there was, I know there was discussion about it. And you're right, they do have the space to do it where that house is.
Was that house always contemplated to be torn down by that development?
I, I, yeah, I think so. And I think they were.
driveway is supposed to go for the condos is where the house is.
Okay.
On the plans.
Okay. And they were going to use.
Nice to hear that from a neighbor.
And they were going to use it originally for a bit of a construction office until they got something else built enough to use that, kind of like what they did at the Greens West.
Okay, I'll ask the planner.
Remember, I think they used the clubhouse as their construction office until the model home was built, right? So.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Let's see.
Good one.
I sent an email out to Mr. Steinhardt. Some of the questions were, there's some interest in seeing the updates on the municipal light plant to be added to the old business since, and curious, people were curious where we are with that. And let's see. The other question that came up with that, are we eligible for any of the last mile initiative or is that strictly going to be for the really rural areas?
We are still looking into that. We don't think we qualify for a lot of it because we're not exactly an underserved community. But we've been having discussions with that, including the legislative folks and potential providers to look into that for us. And there is also a community compact grant available for municipal fiber. When you connect city or town buildings together, that just happens to co-locate with your muni fiber infrastructure that you build out. And we're lucky because you have the DPW yard to the north, the library and the schools to the east, the cemetery to the south and town hall in the middle, that would all have to be connected to that muni network. And there's a grant of about two hundred and, I want to say it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's available.
Less than a bit of space.
Yeah. So, yeah, it covers a lot of lives.
NBI did do the connections for this building to police and fire.
Correct.
So that's already underground connecting us as a campus.
And probably can use that for the other thing too.
Oh, we've been using it for other improvements, but we had.
But that's an internal side of it, not, but anyway, there's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar community compact grant. Sorry, I didn't mean to derail your discussion.
No, no, not at all.
You know, it is a good point. I will, I had it on my list to update tonight, but we should carry this under old business.
And obviously Doug, you could segue into how that fits to our site visit last Thursday.
Well, I'll get to that under old business when Mr. Perone is.
And also, which was brought to my attention, the, the was a discussion with the parties, actually both parties. Apparently Chesterfield just recently did a recreational cannabis thing. There's a lot of concern from the constituents regarding the distances. People have done on the GIS. I finally figured out exactly how to do it. People are even concerned with the two hundred and fifty. I know there's some concerns elsewhere where people have said they might express their opinions. But in the research in that, they found that their bylaws were the, this Attorney General deemed them too restrictive. So that's what we have to, just to, so people know.
Distance issue.
Because of, because of, they have a very limited business area as well. And that was one of the things that came up and the Attorney General did find in favor of the, I didn't read the whole ruling. I'm assuming it was the plaintiff.
Whoever appealed it.
Yeah.
You have to be careful with a, they call it a, an effective prohibition, right? Say, you can do this, but you got to be ten miles from this and ten miles from that, which means there's not a single place in your town that you can do it. But the attorney, and it's up to the Attorney General to review it. So you I think I'm going to stay out of it from the point of view of, you know, I, I made my argument at the, at the planning board.
And my argument.
To stay in this, that was my opinion as, as a resident and that's up, it's their article town meeting. I'm sure there'll be vigorous debate at town meeting, which is where you can have that debate. But I also think that if you look at it from any distance, as long as you had, and I, it's kind of arbitrary, my, my take is usually ten. Ten locations where you could cite this thing, then it, it would not be an effective prohibition unless you specifically, you would say, oh, we want to have this in this zone. And you got to be ten miles from it. And then you can't, you can't have it in the zone that you just allowed it. That's effective prohibition. But if you said, oh, you could have it in, in this, but it's got to be this, and there are ten places that it could be done, then it probably isn't an effective prohibition. And then, but, and a lot has changed, Jason, in with not just this, and we were going around, I know we talked about this during the other. There's a petition for the zone change and what is spot zoning and.
That's going to be an issue on that.
Well, you know what? There was very different definitions of spot zoning. My definition of spot zoning and what the elected planning board feels is spot zoning is different. And what the Attorney General might rule on that, well, that's a really counts at the end of the day. But, you know, I think if you have, you know, all industrial and, you know, one business restricted and all industrial, that's spot zoning. Right? It, you just, by and of its nature, one, you know, so when you take a look at that area and say, you know, is that spot zoning? I think one could be curious about it. They don't seem to be troubled by it in that, but it's an application by someone that's put it on a town meeting warrant, the planning board gave, the elected planning board gave their, their deal. And now it's up to, again, vigorous debate at town meeting to decide. So I, I made a comment in public to just say, you got to be just cognizant of that as part of the process from the planning, land use planning, because whatever you do for that, if you rezone it, it's not just for the current occupant, it's forever. And so if it enables other uses, well, you have to think about that.
And it sets a precedent.
And it can also.
Because your zoning is what protects your district, what protects your, you know, your housing stock, to make sure you don't have incompatible uses next to one of it.
Right.
Because you're always. Otherwise you'll look like, well, he did it, certain town to the east of us.
But, but that I believe was and then the other issue was that was brought up was what we're doing about the board and committee feedback review we had talked about in the past. I believe, like, they were, they were, we were, it had been brought up, brought up. I did not bring it up, but it was a, like an evaluation process.
From the appointment process?
Yes.
Yeah, we should do that. We could actually carry that. I think we should talk about that, what went right, what went wrong. And what we could do better. I think it was a hell of a lot better this year than it was in years past. From, I mean, look at the sheer number of applicants we got and, and the way the process worked can always get better. And so I think we should, we should probably carry that for.
Is that what you're referring to? The appointment process we have?
The appointment process as well as
Evaluation.
Like, if a chair wants to say, I'm having an issue with, you know, can they come to us and say, is there a procedure in place to, this person is ineffective?
I'm going to try to cover that in the handbook.
I believe you were working on something along that lines.
That we'll all review and chime in on.
Is that like the onboarding one that you're going to work with Nate Dean on?
Yes.
Okay. So add slash off boarding?
I was going to. On and off boarding. There we go. Exactly. I was thinking, exactly. That's what was going through my head.
And again, it doesn't cover independently elected boards.
Correct.
No, of course not, right?
But so in our quest to create more boards that are elected and independent, you just need to know you're going to be diminishing that. So.
Well, we had this discussion already.
I know, just letting you know, you know, the unintended consequences.
In part. That's a split board. On the town ward.
And that is.
That's it?
All right. I think that was enough.
That's good. No, that was great. How, how many people come to those sessions, Jason? And I'm not picking, I wanted.
The first few I had was five, six, ten. Unfortunately, the last two have been about five. But it's there and I want it. I said from the get-go that I was going to do that and I, it's, I mean, this is a great thing. Like I spoke to the individual that was there and I said, well, he's like, these are my concerns. This is what I didn't like that you, I go, that's great. I go, because I need to know what you don't like. You know, that's what we were elected for and we may not agree on it, but it's, feedback is good.
No doubt. I'm just curious on the forum, because I mean, or on the format, right? Because a lot of folks email me or call me and we have a conversation and I'll give them where I'm at. And if it's feedback to bring back here, I bring it back here. But to have it in a, a group setting, I'm curious how it works for you.
So it, I haven't had any issues. The biggest issue when I first started was I didn't realize I had to reserve certain areas in town hall. And I found out the hard way.
But people don't come in all at once either.
No, they kind of.
Screening. So isn't it like really?
Just like a state record.
It's not really like an open forum where you're all office hours. I've been there. I used to go, but now I'm here. So.
I've done them in the senior center and we, and you know, a bunch of times and usually during, it'll get on the agenda with the the seniors downstairs, I'll bring coffee and donuts and then anyone's welcome to come in, but it tends to be.
That's the biggest, the biggest issue I have is time of the day.
Is getting coffee.
Yeah. Box of Joe is quite the production at the one down by the, my, our area of town. No matter what, I, I even did it at a web order and they're like, we're working on it. Five, yeah, five, ten minutes ahead of time, like, okay, but but at least they have.
No, the feedback is good. I just was curious how it works to do it. And you know, probably our, you know, time of the day and when you do it is going to weigh on everything. So like, you're doing it in the middle of the day is probably not great for some, but it's great for others. And so you kind of got to do all of it. But good feedback. Anything else, sir?
That is it.
Young lady.
The only other thing, just to, I used to go to them when I wasn't in the seat, but today is my six months in the seat.
Congratulations. So far. I'm cautiously optimistic.
I find it best just to stay quiet.
Okay.
Okay, so I just have a, do I have any new business? Uh, just one. I expected a young lady to join us tonight and during public comment, but I don't see her. But I want to just put the, we talked last meeting briefly about SRO and the second SRO. And I know that there is a discussion ongoing between the South Victor and Grant, I don't want to initial, I wrote my own notes here and it would make your head explode with all the initials. School Resource Officer for the South Victor and Granville Regional School. School Resource Officer for the South Victorin Granville Regional School District. And the Chair of the School Board, uh, and our Police Chief are having a conversation about what to do, given the latest, uh, news that we have, which was not great.
You want me to carry that going forward?
I, I would like to carry it. Just it, it, it's probably more part of a budget discussion, but I think we should carry it because it was brought to my attention. Someone emailed me about it, so I brought it here and, um, so I think we should just carry it.
Okay.
All right. That's it for new business. Old business, nothing on the dispensary that's coming right up. Hunting bylaw. Um, did everyone receive an email back on the, please don't do this anti-gun, anti-hunting thing?
Uh, I received, uh, some text messages.
Okay. So I think we should carry that as a, a discussion appointment for after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, another chief's looking at it.
Did send it.
And, and, and after, and hopefully we'll get feedback from the police department.
Already on your.
Okay, good. Well, that's why I have it here. So I want to carry it to have the, uh,
The chief and the.
And the chief and EPO come back on that.
Yeah.
And then we'll review some of the other feedback we got. I, I don't, I don't know if I related to you during my, during the meeting. But I remember, uh, my stepfather was an avid hunter. And in his stuff, when I was cleaning out his stuff after he passed was he had a little booklet that he carried with all the letters from everybody who said, you know, please extend all courtesies to this gentleman to hunt on my land. And this is, some of it was 40, 50 years old. It seemed common sense to me. But, and I, but I'd like to hear all sides of it to see why someone would be opposed to that. Um, cause they may very well have a good reason that I'm not thinking of, but I'd like to, to have a discussion before and take the feedback from police and EPA. Uh, select board goals and objectives updates for tonight.
I have nothing new.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, land license for American Legion. I still shot myself in the foot. I have not started, I actually spent time with Darcy, but I was at that funeral. So I will find the right time to talk to her about that and keep moving that ahead. Uh, MGL, we gotta get past town meeting.
Back up on that for a second.
Sure.
Um, I, I was inquiring, looking for answers if we were to sell it to, to the American Legion, if it would indeed have to go to a bid process. And from what I learned, researched, it's under a threshold that would not require that. And I asked Carl if he knew anything about that. He kinda said, we needed to decide if we wanted to pursue that for an answer before we make that decision.
Cause it's under a lease. Well, not, we don't.
The lease and then the license.
We don't control the land, so we would just have to make sure we figure which step off first. The board needs to figure out how it wants to.
Do we have?
We just wouldn't want to make an offer to sell it to them if it then had to go.
I guess my, because of the lease, we obviously.
Next year. They got one more year of it.
Well, that's the license.
The li, oh, the lease is like a hundred year lease.
No, no, there's a lifespan on that. I gave, I gave Jason. I've got. It may only, I'm not sure. I don't want to confuse that with the one for the town common. So, but there is, there is an end date, there is an end date on it, but you know, you just need to be mindful of that. Whatever you're thinking about doing, you'd have to go through that process.
Or amend.
And then the issue with the valuing is because these, these types of values, just like all of these municipal buildings, they're not updated because they don't produce taxes. They're not, you know, they haven't gone through updated market analysis and all that. And then you got the other issue about whether or not a land is income producing. So there are more things that actually come into play. And the assesses partnered with a person who they hire by the name of Roy Bishop, and he does have a skillset where he could help weigh in on that in terms of just figuring out what the number is. So we just don't know what it is until we go through that process because we don't usually sell municipal property. So it's been a while since we haven't dealt with that.
The assessed value is updated every time we update the assessed values though, is it not?
Um, I have to go back and look at this, the stuff. I don't know if, how that's viewed by, it's not generating taxes. So it's tax exempt property. So I'm not sure. And that's not getting a pie.
Sure. Which time they spend on it.
But let.
Exactly.
Let me also just add this one, my thought on it is it is income producing. I think it would be fraught with side effect potentially to try to convey the land to a third party. And without going through some kind of open process. Right? People will, will, I believe people will have, look at it in whatever light that they choose to see it. And I, and some of those will not be great. And so therefore it would be in everyone's best interest then, if you want, if you were gonna have to, if you wanted to sell it, then go through the process to sell it, like you were going to dispose of any other asset. Right? Whether, you know, we retire the, the only time, and I'll be on the record, the only time I'm against all of the, um, open and total public procurement or disposal is when we access the dog. And the dog guy gets him for a dollar, no debate, right? But anytime, anything else when we, you know, we get rid of a cruiser or a lawnmower or a stepler subject to a certain amount of dollars, there's a public process that's put in the paper and people can bid on it.
Right. If you're under a certain dollar.
And, and so I just, I, I don't want to, I don't think we want to be party to giving a piece of land away and then have people go, why don't I get that kind of deal? Or how do I get that kind of deal? And I, I don't, it, it's, I know our, the intention is 100% good, no doubt. I'm, I'm, you know, on the record with that. But you have to look at how it's going to get looked at from, from other angles. And, and I just think, I, like I said, I need to, to have that conversation with Darcy. I still think a much longer term license agreement avoids all of that controversy and potential controversy and stuff. And I think we'll achieve the goal that everyone's looking to do. And then you don't have to go through the process. Cause what if you do and someone comes out of the woodwork and, and bids a crazy amount of money for it, owns it, and now they, they are in a position to.
Why it's under the threshold that it does not need to go out to bid.
But then, but then someone, I'll just be honest. I think someone's going to look at that suspiciously at best and go, why would you give away a piece of town land for what would be less than what the town should generate for it? And, cause we don't know what it would be worth unless you go through that process. Even if you have an appraisal, someone's going to take a look at that and go, well, they have a contract with these guys on a national event. They need this piece of land for that. Everyone, it, it, it needs it. So it's a real, I think it's a really slippery slope. So you just gotta be careful. I, I think I'd be much more in favor with a much longer term lease. That's financially amenable to all the parties, including the schools who are a party to that lease.
Yeah, three years. If you, if you wanted to do more than three years.
We go to town meeting. And we go to town meeting in this.
For the license.
Yep. Correct. And we have one more year on this license to run. I know where everyone's talked about amending it and everything else, but we, we have to get to that point. And like I said, I, you know, we had talked briefly, I think in a meet, previous meeting or, you know, about having, you know, maybe you, you have the, uh, some kind of license agreement with its scale to realize that they, they have one more year left on this license at the high rate. And then, you know, so the license would go low and then, you know, gradually go up to some reasonable number over the course of several years to accommodate the fact that they have one more year left on the lease. If we can't come to some agreement to amend the lease with all the parties that are involved.
We did something similar like that with the, um, Westfield Gas and Electric for the, uh, use of the, uh, Grandchild Corridor.
Hmm.
Cause that's essentially a utility corridor.
Hmm.
And when that agreement was put together by Attorney Buckley and Attorney Welch, it had different escalators over the course of time.
Yep. Just food for thought. But I think, I, I've been thinking about this as far as the, the land piece itself and somehow transferring ownership of the land without having somebody have a look at it and not have it be a very open process. I just think, I don't want to use the word politically, but that's the word I'm using. Politically is fraught danger.
Look at it.
Okay. Town administrator recruitment panel meetings and job description review.
Chapter 61A review.
I have not heard back. I'm gonna torture Ben. Uh, town administrator recruitment panel meetings and job description review. Do I have a meeting coming up? Is it tomorrow?
No.
November 30th.
November 30th?
Ah, I knew it.
With you. They want to start with you. Then they're gonna do all the department. Then they have to do Jason and Diane. They want to interview me. So they can only do so much in one day and they have more to do.
Especially they're not gonna put me and you on the same day. Never get out of here.
I think, uh, ACO has provided them the contact, the emails and numbers for people. So mine? They can, they can talk to me over the course of time.
I do not know that Nadine got an official nickname.
What's that?
ACO.
ACO.
Done.
Um, job description review though, what's our plan for doing that?
Can we, do we?
Before or after we interview with?
I would have notes. Cause I, I know I have my own thoughts on it. I have a whole page of written stuff down for what I want in.
Yeah.
Yeah, in that, um, so, but I'd be prepared when you have that meeting with them. And then when we come back to the, um, cause we need to.
So after we all talk to them.
Yeah. And then we'll, we'll put this, we'll carry this here and have a discussion because this is the appointing authority. But it would be good to give back to the, in the job descrip, if you can get the job description done by the time that the search panel meets, they can start comparing up against capabilities of the candidates to see how they align.
Do we have an estimated time for the search panel? I know we have the group. They've all been notified. They're going through their swear-ins. We have a draft agenda that just needs to have a date set on it. So.
He's looking at me, kid.
I know he is.
So do we is, and he's looking at you. That means do you.
Do we? Yeah.
I figured that one out after.
I shall, I shall.
This is ACO. This is.
We will, we will assist you in any manner possible to facilitate.
Gotcha.
That was a capital wait, no.
And when I say we, I mean you. All right. T-Mobile hometown grant application review authorization and pursuit.
Same status waiting on, uh, I'm gonna, I guess have to poke Ms. Sullivan a little bit and see where she is. I asked, I asked her, like I said, two weeks ago.
Is her application data or is it rolling?
It, it is, it rolls. It's quarterly.
Okay.
Uh, for, till 2025. So uh, it's just a matter of, like I said, I need all the information before I can apply. So.
We talked about the board and committee onboarding and duty statement discussion during Jason's discussion and off boarding.
Over the holidays, I'll get some headway.
I don't think there's any updates this week on proposed parking lot expansion for town hall after last week's debate. Liquor quota breakdown from State Alcoholic Beverage Commission.
Uh, the ABCC is going to be coming into town to meet with the police department. And some other parties, and they're going to review the status, location, number of licenses, every lo, everything. So the chief is facilitating that with his, um, um, sergeant, who's the designated liquor license.
As of last week? Yes.
Yes. So after that was done last week, the next day, those things were put in line.
Great. I still think, and I did not have anybody, uh, come in this week, um, I don't want to get into anyone's business, but there was a good reason for not having one of the people that were scheduled to come in this week to come in, uh, for some personal reasons. So I would like to continue this though. I would like to have everyone come through here at one point. Yep. But I want to, we'll get some on for after Thanksgiving. Um, I just.
Yeah, it's not going to stop the renewal.
No, but I think it's, it was a good thing to do. Um, and I don't want anyone who was here last week to draw inference, the fact that there was none on the agenda this week.
Yeah.
Right? That, um,
Yeah.
Without going into all the, the details, but we will be back on this shortly.
You got a lot done last week.
No, we did.
Prime, you heard about the other places. And the owner talking about the prime as two other places. So.
No, I, we did a lot, but we were gonna.
Basically.
But I said, and I, but I told it, the one gentleman, look, everyone's coming in. And then this week we have none. So I just want to be clear on the messaging as to why that is.
Yeah. So, well, I think what we ought to do, I mean, you clearly have the, um, supervising liquor license agent who can evaluate which ones really needs to amend, which ones don't.
But I think it's a good practice for not everybody's met all the managers or all the, all the license holders. So it's, it's just good business. Uh, old business.
Well, we've gone over one, uh, well, I'm going to bring up the liquor licensing. Uh, and I hope what I experienced this weekend is not what I'm going to experience from the, the the Wick doing business as Hilltop. I made an attempt to swing by there twice this weekend and they were not open. That's problematic to me. I don't want to be, it, I'm not going to call him anything. Cause I know he assumed that and I'm not pointing fingers, but I'm watching and other people are watching. So if you're going to state something, I hope that is the truth. Um, that's a pet peeve of mine. So other than that, I don't believe I have anything on the old business. We're, most of it's, we're dealing with it aggregations. We're just waiting on.
The RP, I'm gonna ask him where the RP is.
Um, and then the dispensaries, as we know, it's, it, everything hinges on December 5th.
Yeah.
So I just, that's, I would, I wanted to say what I wanted to say because I did not, uh, that's concerning to me. And I hope that person is listening and/or is, is informed that, uh, you know, stand, stand by your word. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Anything else for old business?
No, I covered it under, yeah, with the, uh, the police coming in to be the, the BLC.
Me neither, but maybe entering new business, but you, were you planning on mentioning the tax?
The recap?
Yeah.
The certification of the tax rate?
Mm-hmm.
What is it?
1547.
Done.
Did you wanna?
Go ahead.
Yours?
Nope.
We did get notice of the certification of the tax rate for fiscal '24 and it will be $15.47 per thousand.
Sounds good for 10, 12.
Anything else?
No.
ACO? I don't think that's a good one.
A C A O is what I.
Yeah, because ACO is a different person altogether. We got a couple of three other letters.
I noted.
Okay.
Anything else for?
I'm sure I'll hear about it tomorrow.
Oh, I'm certain you are gonna. No.
No.
Okay. I have a couple. One, um, thank you to the South Victorin Granville Regional School District for making their buildings available for this week, all last week, I mean, for uh, Southwick Police Department, Southwick Fire Department, and some of our mutual aid partners and surrounding communities that came and did some uh, high tension training in the schools. Um, I was, uh, invited as an observer. I actually got to see Mr. Mazza, who I hadn't seen in a long time.
John, how is?
Looks great. He's doing really well. Um, but it was a really good cooperation between the police department, um, and EMS services around, um, active shooter type events and not just school stuff, but they did all kinds of different scenarios. But it was very educational, very informative, a good training for our department. We talked about the SRO. Um.
Doctor, excuse me, does that lend itself to an application of training within municipal buildings?
I believe so. And I don't want to go into the details of what I saw, cause I don't know if we're supposed to, but I just wanted to.
If they're concerned about the procedures, the same for any type of that.
Right.
Type of incident.
Yeah, it's a. But it was, it was, it was excellent training brought in. Yeah. And, you know, I know at my, uh, my place of employment, we've been received, we've received training on that as well, not to the level these guys are doing. Um, but more of what to do in type of thing. Sad state of affairs, but you got a plan for it. Um.
Thank you.
I did have on my list, thank you for bringing it up, the high speed internet update. Um, Carl, myself, I was late, but everyone else was there right on time, uh, to tour the Whip City Fiber uh, HQ up in Westfield off, was that Lockhouse Road?
Uh, I don't have any.
Turnpike Industrial Road. So we got to see spools and spools of cable and all of their big trucks. But more importantly, we got to see what Muni Fiber looks like. And it's, and I'm not, I'm not selling it short, but it's the most unimpressive tour you'll ever see, right? It's, it's a rack of switches with blinky lights and orange cables coming out, but that's what it's supposed to be. But it, it gave everybody a great frame of reference. Um, that's on the committee to kind of see what's going on. There's a couple of people on the committee that are intimately familiar with fiber. And then there's a couple that are very involved with Muni Fiber in other communities. Um, that were lucky that they happen to live in our town. Um, but for a couple of other folks on the committee that had never seen a stack of networking gear and kind of got the high level deal, we also got to see their, their dispatch and network monitoring center. And they talked about some of the improvements they're making with that. Um. Um.
Inventory.
Yeah, it was spools and spools of fiber and trucks and inventory of transformers. And, but that's more for their T and E side, but they have. The routers and splitters and special splitter trucks that can go out in the middle of winter to repair a fiber that breaks or gets caught or what have you. So very impressive tour, um, Mr. Flattery. Flattery? Yes, Mr. Flattery, uh, spent quite a bit of time with us. They finally put it aside. They were close to seven o'clock, right?
Well, it's never a short meeting.
Not with Doug and Carl, so.
You said it. I was thinking it.
We learned a lot.
We, we absolutely did. It was a great, it was a great discussion.
And they put a full team. They, they didn't just have one or two people, they had ten or twelve.
And they had a dozen people that showed up for.
Roles and how it all works, so. It was a good, and I'm sure if all of you that know members of the committee would hear the same things from them.
Imagine. So, yeah, I mean, it was a good visit. The, um, I did email Cindy today to post for next Tuesday. We should have our next. High-speed internet meeting, so.
And we continue to file, let's see, we filed some stuff for the bond application for Verizon through the. The Maya Group, and I'm waiting for them to okay that, so then we can get ready to file the ever source one, but I'm waiting to have the source to okay. The agreement, we have the. Um, Verizon agreement in place for the poll. Both who don't have the ever source one, and it's modeled after the same deal they did with West Springfield. But they said they were getting it ready, you know, to finalize it, because then you have to follow each one of them up with a. The, the issue that relates to the bond. So that when that's all in place, as we went over the other day. Then you start doing all the make-ready work designs, and that's really where the time is coming. And that's where some, where you start spending the money going out the door. So.
So we have been working along and the town has also been working separate even from the high-speed internet, because these are all perfunctory things that need to be done.
Authorized by the vote.
But authorized by the vote with the, the poll applications and the bonding and then all the other work. No matter who you choose, it's not going to change any of what we're doing so far. And then next week, I've already distributed to the board. Was, uh, to the high-speed sub was all of the. Other contracts and RFPs that some of the other towns have done, including the IMA that Westside had done. Thank you, Carl and Nadine for, and Lisa for getting those. Um, and so one of the things we're going to talk about next week. Um, is to really start to narrow the field down and say, okay, are we serious about entering into an agreement with this guy or that guy or? Do we need to have one last round of reviews? I, I'll let the, the board decide, but then we need to come back to this board. To actually, oh, and negotiate and execute said, you know.
This is the sign.
HSIC is just an advisory sub to this board, so they, they should make a recommendation back to this board. To then go and, if they are recommending this, then you have the right to question it, of course. But if you decide to say, okay, well, then this board would enter into negotiations.
From a procurement point of view. Some of these entities that you're looking at are municipal utilities, so they already have. Well, the latitude under law design in agreement, that's number one, and that's. Not too far different than when we went with Colonial, which is authorized under a different subset of the law to enter into a thing.
Correct.
You know, that, even though that's a private sector for profit company. So we have, you have the same latitude to do this with an entity that has municipal, um, status. So. But yeah, there's a lot of moving parts to it, but that just happened last Thursday. So here we are, four or five days later, updating everybody.
Hmm.
Coincide, perfect.
Yeah, well, your question was good. Yeah, I've been meaning that we should probably leave this on this, on old business, just to get an update for, there is anything going on. I know it. You know what happens is we move something to goals and objectives, which is where that is. And the same thing with like the power is on goals and objectives, so it's not carried under old, but it's not a bad idea to update it every, every now and then. It is moving along, we didn't forget, and this is the long, arduous part, no matter, even if we move tomorrow to enter into an IMA. With a provider, all this make-ready work is going to take forever. Have you seen the bridge in Westfield? Most of that was utility work, right?
No, yeah.
It just takes forever.
Couple of months to find a valve too, so.
It's gonna take one or two years done, very probably.
Oh, two years. Just to make ready, not the bridge.
It's, I, it.
The bridge, two years too.
The. The, um, based on the build out that I'm aware of with Web City Fiber. The, for total completion, you're looking at closer to five.
Oh, yeah, but before we start, it's probably two, and then it's gonna take a couple of years to get it all done.
Those fiber trucks on the side of the road till ten o'clock at night.
Good. Uh, lastly, we, we had the, uh, I think you're up next week, or? Not next week.
Next month.
Next month, two weeks, radio show.
I signed you up.
She won't show up.
So wait, I.
I already talked to Ken.
Did you hear what I, my, my modest proposal?
No.
My modest proposal is we post it and we could do it together. And then just kind of talk about whatever we want to talk about. To get you a little more comfortable with the whole.
I'm not uncomfortable with it.
Oh, you just don't want to do it.
Don't want to do it necessarily. When I have something to bring forward and. A project that I can roll out, that's the time. I don't want to go do it just to talk about whatever comes to mind.
Hmm. Up to you. I made the modest proposal to, to Ken. I might have done it on the show.
I've pretty much got it in my calendar now.
Yeah, I do too, and I, it's easy to keep track of now because you have the even months and I have the odd months.
There was a little confusion there, like, to the beginning or.
Talk to him. If I have a short. Twenty-minute thing, he'll let me join in on his show.
We'll continue to work on this. All I got.
It's gonna be a work in progress.
No exact session tonight. I didn't do six twenty, but we made it before seven o'clock.
I never.
Anything else going on? Oh, did we actually vote on that?
Oh, let's do that.
You know what? I entertain a motion to allow the Economic Development Commission to have a Facebook page. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Outbound only, no comments.
Yeah, yeah.
And I will. Uh, you seconded his.
Yeah.
Then you need a vote.
Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan, aye. Thank you.
We just did public comments backwards, that's all. The time was of the essence with that, so it's all good, but, uh, and by the way, the posting looked very nice.
And good luck with the events.
Yes.
Went well last year, I'm sure to, with your work, it'll probably go even better.
Absolutely. And, um, before we adjourn, uh, wish everyone happy, healthy, safe. Enjoyable Thanksgiving. And, um.
Same.
We'll see you next week, right? We are meeting next week?
No.
No.
We're not meeting next week.
No, no, because it is the day after Thanksgiving. It is.
Right, that's evil still travels.
And then we are not on the fourth, but we are on the fifth.
So see you next month.
At the big day. Prior to the big show.
So no meeting on the fourth either. We're gonna have a consent agenda on the fifth.
Correct.
Fair enough.
Sounds good.
Motion adjourned, please.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan, aye.
Thank you.